At least their hockey team scored more than their football team, didn't they?
Yeah.
We beat the spread. I bet man, I could have made money on that.
Lemson just blew them off the field.
I was reading this morning that they were saying that Urban Myers is already starting to juggle his staff.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Gosh.
Yeah, no, I thought you were talking about Miami football.
Oh, well, I know you were there.
That one.
You were there.
Very well, but.
If they win.
No, they lost. They did better than.
Than OSU.
Than what a lot of people expected, yeah, so. We only need to synchronize those bells. Get Nadine on that. I can buy what Nadine tells me here.
Good evening. Like to call this Tuesday, January third, two thousand seventeen, meeting in Middletown City Council order. If you please stand and join me in a moment meditation and the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Here.
Ms. Bronston.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
I received one assistant's comment card. I'd like to invite Mr. Rick Fishball down to the podium. If we could get your name and address to the record, please.
I'm Rick Fishball. I live at twenty-seven eighty Arbor Point Drive in Middletown. I am one of the Fishball Homes, and likewise, I am the chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce. I've sent you an email that each one, and I think Doug's got a copy of it, I sent out earlier today. I hope you all have had a chance to read it. I'm a little concerned about the current legislation, which is pending, I think before you this evening, for the extension of the levy for the senior citizens or the, which is the central connections. And the concern I have is, first of all, is I am a senior, so when I point a finger out, I've got three pointing back at me. I'm sixty-six years old. At some point, I know I'll take use of those services, so I'm mindful of the good work they do. Meals on Wheels, the things that they do are all important, and they're important for the city. And I don't begrudge them to have that. But the problem I have is that four years ago, and I think that at that time, I don't know if Dan was on, Dan was here and Larry was here. Everybody else is new in the room, that this also came before us, and it was a crisis situation at that time as well. And at that time, we were told, and I had this conversation with Mike Scorty, who had, had the work for the Middletown Senior Center, that if we pass this now, we'll never see us again, we're going to be perfect, everything just turns us around. And the plan was to pay off the mortgage, and they gave them the funds to operate the senior center in effective manner from this point on. But yet, here we are, four years later, we're under emergency legislation, and this time, once again, nothing's happened. We need the money again. We need the, we're out of money, and we need this for the continued operations. If you pass it, I would strongly urge you to put some sort of qualification on the, on the passage that says, alright, that the money has to be used to pay off the mortgage. Or if it's not going to be a payoff mortgage, don't kid us from the fact that it's going to be used for the operation of the business and not for the paying off the mortgage. Because it just will be a repeat council. Four years from now, we'll sit back here again, hopefully Doug's still here, and all of you as well. But we'll have a different council, they'll have a different director, they'll have a different person plugging their program, and we'll be in the same boat again. So we somehow, we have to get something that makes it positive and makes things happen, and that's what I'm looking for each of you as council members to do. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I have no other cards this evening, so we can move to our city manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got two items to, this evening. One of them, I'm just seeking clarification on, and I'd ask Assistant Chief Hoffman to come up. We are working on the July fourth fireworks. Have some questions about dates, and I may have created some of this confusion. But as I, excuse me, got done with last year's fireworks, I thought that we had heard, I had heard from council that they were pretty adamant that with the Fourth of July this year being on a Tuesday, they preferred that we had the fireworks on Tuesday and the event all day on Tuesday. We're having some questions about whether or not that's logistically possible. And then there was some question as to whether or not I heard that correctly on July fourth. So I've asked us, with Dave Van Orstel retiring, Assistant Chief Hoffman is going to take over the fireworks for the city, getting that set up. He's been meeting with our partners and wanted him to give an update on where we stand right now and give you a little idea what, what our questions are, so that I can send him out with good instructions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I met last night, or I'm sorry, last week with Nicole Clark from Public Works with Nadine and with Greg Pratt and Adrian Shear with the Broad Street Blast people about the fireworks. And keep in mind, the fireworks aren't just one event, it's several events that come together pretty seamlessly, thanks to everybody that's worked on them in the past years, and I know I have some big shoes to fill there. There's, there's a fishing derby that's run by Go Fish, there's the fireworks themselves that are run by, by the city in conjunction with Legendary Entertainment. There's the parade that's typically put on by a private citizen that seeks a permit for that. And then lastly, there's the festival and the concert that's put on by Adrian Shear and the Broad Street Blast people. We went into this meeting under the assumption that council's desire was to have the fireworks on the Fourth of July. And then Adrian spoke during the meeting and said that was not her understanding, that she had spoken to some council people privately and had gotten a different message from them. And then, as the meeting progressed, she indicated that the Broad Street Blast people were, would not do the festival and the concert on the Fourth of July, and she cited some pretty valid reasons for that. She said that the bands would be more expensive on the Fourth of July, that the fireworks would be more expensive. And quite possibly, most importantly, the vendors that she typically uses are all committed on the Fourth with people that they have worked with a lot in the past. I asked her if she would commit to doing something on the third with the fireworks on the Fourth and make it a two-day event. She would not commit to that. She said she would have to go back to her board. We've already bid out the fireworks for the Fourth with Steve Kaiser, so I called him the next day, and I talked to him about the Fourth versus the Third. He felt strongly and strongly suggested that we do the fireworks on the Third for many of the same reasons. But then he also added that he anticipated that there would be a bigger crowd on the Third since people have to work on the Fifth, but not necessarily on the Fourth. And that the fireworks, in order to draw the crowd, need to be in conjunction with a festival, a concert, things like that. So that's sort of where we are. And before we progress any further, I just need to take council's temperature, I suppose, and find out if you have a desire, a strong desire of the Third, the Fourth, where we'd like to go. And if you can't answer tonight, that's fine, you know, whenever, I'd be happy to answer any questions or.
And just, you may not have a calendar, the July third, I have it as Monday, is that correct? July Fourth would be a Tuesday, so again, some people would be working on the Third. They may not be able to come all day to a festival on the Third. Fourth has its own issues because it's, again, isolated, with days on both sides of it. So we wanted to kind of get a feel for, for where we should take this next and, you know, what's council's preference, and we'll go back and try to put the best plan together we can for this, but.
I do have a follow-up question, just, just so I'm clear. In terms of the parade, I think that's where we heard some of the concern last year expressed. The parade was moved from the Fourth to Saturday the second, or something like that, but. And I understood the folks that had been running it are stepping down, retiring. Has anyone stepped up to put on the parade going forward, have we heard?
No.
Definitively, okay.
Doesn't mean that nobody will.
Right, oh yeah, no, I understand, I understand that. I just, I just didn't know if we'd had anything, any updates that I may have missed or something like that, so.
Just to clarify, so Adrian thinks that we should do all this on the Third?
That's correct.
With the entertainment and everything on a day when most people are going to be working?
That's correct. Her thought is, and I don't mean to speak for her, but during the meeting, she said, most of these things happen in the, in the evening. The daytime things were more, the fishing derby, afternoon and evening are when the crowds got there for the festival. But she was pretty adamant about the Third.
Are, are people going to get off on the Third? Do we know that far ahead? Are people going to celebrate on the Third in conjunction with the Fourth on that Tuesday?
I don't know that we have the answer to that. I, I think generally, when the Fourth of July is in the middle of the week, anytime, you, you just get that day off, you know, and you're working Monday and Wednesday. One of the nice things about having it last year on the weekend is that we could spread it out.
Spread it out, yeah.
Will the city be open on Monday? Will the offices be open, city offices?
We are open on Monday. Yes, we are. Open on Monday.
Would it be possible to look at splitting some of the events? I mean, if we're looking at doing the music and the festival-type stuff on the evening of the Third, if that's what you're suggesting, I mean, that's when, I mean, people would likely be off work, or I mean, that's typically, they do the Broad Street Bashes on Wednesday nights, and those are pretty well attended now. Crowds for the Fourth of July are a lot larger, obviously. And then maybe do some things like the fishing derby and the parade on the morning of the Fourth. Stretch it out that way, I don't know if that's possible or not, or.
Along those lines of making it a two-day event, and that's why I asked her if she would commit to doing it on the Third if the fireworks were on the Fourth. She said she would not commit to that.
Okay. Well, I was again thinking maybe the fireworks with the music on the Third and then roll over to the, some of the events on the Fourth.
We can certainly explore.
I, I mean, I, I don't have a hard, hard and fast.
Concert in the evening with fireworks on the Third, and then do the, the more city functions, the fishing tournaments and some of the other stuff at the park on the Fourth, when everybody's off. We could look at doing something like that. That's what we were trying to get a feel from you as to where, where you would like us to try to head.
And that, I mean, in my, in my mind, that would allow for the parade, which I think, again, was where some of the concern came up. And I think the crowds were down a little bit for the parade because of the day change and things like that, but that would address some of those concerns.
I agree.
Do I hear them? Make sure I, I hear you.
See what happens with that.
See, see if we can do the concert and the fireworks the evening of Monday, the Third, and then line up the parade, the fishing derby, and some other events on the Fourth when more people would be off. Does that give you enough to move forward?
Yes, it does.
You want to stay, stay up there and?
Glad to.
One other thing that we want to talk about a little bit, we've had a, a uptick in violence in Middletown over the last six to eight weeks. And we had asked, at least one council member had asked for an update. If you haven't seen Chief Meterslaw's Facebook post today, he did Facebook Live around eleven o'clock today. Did a nice explanation, but we also wanted to bring Assistant Chief Hoffman up tonight just to give you a, a quick update on what's going on and what PD is working on right now. Thank you.
It, it started back with a shooting that started at the Third Base Cafe, and then that same evening, there was a shooting down on Park Street. And then a couple of days after that, there was a shooting at the Boca Bar, which is over on Charles Street. All of those events were connected and were basically the same two group of, two groups of criminals. They weren't gangs, they were just buddies that hung out together, shooting at each other. It started over a botched robbery in one place, and they had an argument inside the bar, and then it moved. And there were retaliating, retaliation shootings that went back and forth. All those people have been arrested and charged. Along with those same times, there were two homicides that occurred, Mr. Romano and Ms. Hoskins. Mr. Romano, Romano was shot in, in his home, and then Ms. Hoskins was murdered in a vacant house, and then her body set on fire. Those people have been arrested. There were three people that were involved with that. They were all members of a group called the Cincinnati White Boys, which is, which is a gang. And there were three people, they've been all arrested and charged with aggravated murder and kidnapping and some other charges, and they're all down at the county jail now. Then most recently, over the weekend, there was a shooting that started in the area of the Five One Three Lounge. The Five One Three Lounge has been cooperative with the police, not only in this instance, but in other instances in the past. In fact, they had hired off-duty police officers to work in the parking lot, and there were two off-duty officers working there that night. One of them saw one of the suspect vehicles and actually drew his weapon on the suspect vehicle on his flashlight and ordered them out of the car, excuse me. Instead, the car took off at a higher rate of speed, went down Clark Street, failed to make the turn, and hit the big stone wall right there behind St. John's Church. There were five people in that car, one female in that car died at the scene, and the rest have been transported. While they were traveling down Clark Street, they threw three guns out of the window that night. The officers recovered two of the guns, and the next morning, a gentleman walking his dog found another gun in the car. So we have no doubt that they were involved in this shooting that night. About ten minutes after that call went out, we had a call of shots fired on Roosevelt at Crawford. That's where the Armco main gate comes in, just around there by Wykoff. And about eleven or twelve minutes after that call, we got a call from Atrium Medical Center of two people showing up there with gunshot wounds. We went out there, and there had, there was a car that had been shot up at that location, and the driver drove it to Atrium Medical Center. There was a female in that car that ultimately did die, and we're investigating that, too. We don't know if those cases are related, but we do know that the suspect vehicle from Roosevelt was also seen in the area of the Five One Three, like they were waiting for these people. And that's, that's the car that we're looking for now. It's a, it's a white Jeep Cherokee with dark rims and dark tinted glass. So if, if anybody that's viewing this sees that vehicle or knows anything about that, we'd urge them to contact us. Shootings and homicides like this are a little different than other crimes because they're so unpredictable. If, if you have a burglar working, you can go stake out the neighborhood where the burglar's working. If you have thefts occurring, retail thefts, you can go stake that out. You can do some things and be proactive about that. Violent crimes like this really don't lend themselves to that because they're often crimes of passion or a spur-of-the-moment thing, or they're very private things that you really have no intel, intel about before they happen. But that doesn't mean that our hands are tied about this, and, and some of the things that we have done, we, we've conducted some hotspot patrols and some directed patrols. Back when the Third Base shooting happened, we started a task force that seemed to be pretty effective. We disbanded it, but we're putting that back together now to address this latest tinge of violence. Community outreach is always very positive during these things and very useful, and we've done a lot of that. Some aggressive investigations to find the root cause of this spike is what's going to solve it ultimately. And I also want to point out that most of these people are not from Middletown. They have some Middletown ties, but they're, they've come into the city either as a result of those ties or for some other reason, but they're not really Middletown residents that are involved in this. Most of this is happening late at night. It's happening around the bars and things like that. So your average Middletone is safe from these things. It, it sounds like it's a sort of a wild, wild west thing out there, but that's, that's really not the case. If, if you don't hang with the drug crowd and you don't, you know, partake in the, in the things that they do, your average Middletone is pretty safe from these things. Middletown has been experiencing a pretty, pretty decent reduction in crime. This is more of a spike, it's a blip, is the way we look at it. It's a bunch of idiots with guns out there, quite frankly. And the sooner we round them up and. If you have any answering questions that we have about that.
Thank you. Appreciate the update and information.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Bruce, start consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration, this evening, we have to receive and file Board and Commission minutes from the Library Board of November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, to confirm the exceptional appointments of Sarah Bontrager to the position of Treatment Plant Operator, Department of Public Works and Utilities, Division of Water Treatment, and of Joseph Phillips to the position of Treatment Plant Operator, Department of Public Works and Utilities, Division of Wastewater Treatment, and to confirm the appointment of Misty Nysley to the position of Income Tax Superintendent, Department of Finance, Division of Taxation.
Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and the actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
That brings us to council comments. Start with Mr. Picard this evening.
Thanks, Mayor.
No comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon.
No comments.
Mr. Moon.
Just one quick comment. I want to bring up something Mr. Atkins talked about at our last meeting very briefly. He mentioned that we have the, the highest effective tax rate in Butler and Warren County, which is not a place any city should aspire to be. Certainly impacting our ability to draw new residents and our ability to draw new, new, new development. So I just hope that's something this council and future councils takes into consideration as we move forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
Yes, I have two announcements, possibly three. The MLK weekend is coming up, probably before our next meeting. I don't know what the date is.
It's the sixteenth.
Yeah, okay. So we have the Ministerial Alliance that is having an MLK service on that Sunday at four o'clock at Pastor McKinney's church, and I think the name of his church is New Life Church. So that's at four o'clock on the fifteenth. We have two activities that I know of that I'll be participating in. On the sixteenth, there's an Elks breakfast, and I think usually the mayor and I end up there. That's on Monday at nine o'clock AM. We have the march beginning at ten thirty, and we'll start at the city building here and march to, down Broad Street to the library and across to Second Baptist Church, where the NAACP officers will be installed, and the city is partnering with that march. So those are the upcoming events, and hope to see you all there. We really want to show unity in our city, even in light of what's going on around the city, that we are all arm in arm together, participating in the protection of the city and quality of life here, and just showing visibly, showing everybody that we are together. So I hope to see you all there. That's it.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to add to what Ms. Bronston mentioned. I know Atrium is working on another event. I think we just got an invitation for that today for noon on Martin Luther King Day, for one-hour event out there. I'm not sure all the details, but I think they'll probably have some information in the paper. So it should be a busy weekend with a number of activities, and it is certainly a good time to come together, and hopefully the weather won't be too frigid or too bitter cold for us, but always a good time to get together. And then just to mention, this Friday is another first Friday in downtown Middletown, so it's, again, a good time to get together post-holiday and kick the new year off with some activities downtown. It's always good to see the Pendleton activity and with a number of new stores. If you weren't down there during the holiday rush, it's certainly a good time to come down and hear what's, and see what's going on. So a lot of, a lot of good things happening there. And with that, we can move to Ms. Fox and legislation for this evening.
Good evening, Mayor. We have two items of legislation this evening, one of which was, is an emergency. So therefore, we would need a motion to waive the charter provisions requiring two separate readings. That would be as to Resolution Number R two thousand seventeen dash oh one.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the charter that requires reading on two separate days and declare Resolution two zero one seven dash zero one an emergency to be read one time only.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
The first item of legislation is Resolution Number R two thousand sixteen dash fifty-nine. This is a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. This would be in regards to the general fund. It is a second reading and is ready for your action.
Okay, do we have much to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Atkins, anything to add?
Uh, no, Your Honor, this is a, just to reiterate, this is from the heroin summit funds that had lapsed at the end of last year's budget to reappropriate those so we can continue our work.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
And the last piece of legislation that we have this evening is Resolution Number R two thousand seventeen dash zero one. This is a resolution requesting the Butler County Auditor and Warren County Auditor to certify to the City of Middletown, Ohio, the total current tax valuation of the city and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a one mil levy upon real property within the corporate limits of the city for the purposes set forth in Ohio Revised Code Sections five, seven, zero, five, dot, one, nine, subsection Y, and this would be declaring an emergency.
Do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Okay, thank you. Mr. Atkins, any updates from the presentation last time?
No, Your Honor, I'll reiterate again just briefly. We had the seniors, Citizen Center, Central Connections with us last time asking us to put on the ballot a renewal levy for their levy that expires at the end of, I guess, last year. We are, it's a two-step process. Tonight's process is to certify to the, both auditors to get a valuation of what that levy would bring in. That will then hopefully be turned around within two weeks. You would have to pass this by emergency this evening, so I can get that out immediately. Upon getting that back, if I can get it back in time for the seventeenth, we would then have to have an emergency second, another piece of legislation on the seventeenth by emergency that would put this on the ballot for May. If there's any break in the time, if we don't get anything back in time, that time will lapse and we will not be able to make it. If we don't have four votes for both tonight and on the seventeenth, we also would not make it to get this on the ballot in May.
I have a comment or a question, I don't know which. So this is an emergency because we were not brought the information ahead of time by Central Connections.
That's correct.
So, so now we're in an emergency situation, and I don't like them. I, I don't, not only Central Connections, but some of the other ones that we've had lately. It bothers me because it tends to put us in a spot where we have to make decisions right here on the Diaz and not be able to think things totally through and, and perhaps make a mistake.
The only, the only thing I would say is this one's less problematic than the second one because if you pass this, that continues, lets the process continue. You still have two more weeks to decide whether you want to actually put it on the ballot. On the seventeenth, that would be the vote to actually put it on the ballot. You could get this back and in the meantime, decide, you know, I've thought about it more and I don't want to do this. And you could vote it down at the seventeenth, and this would be, basically, tonight's would be for not because we wouldn't end up using it. But this allows the process to continue for two more weeks, allows us to gather the information, allows council to discuss it amongst themselves and with the public. And again, the seventeenth will actually put that on the ballot.
Okay, I understand.
Any other questions for Mr. Atkins?
I had one other question. I don't know if it would be for, for Mr. Atkins or somebody from Central Connections. Was reading the newspaper that they have roughly one point two million as far as the, the mortgage. I'm, I'm wondering if that is the payoff quote for today, or if that's principal and interest? And if so, what other liabilities they have that they'd be using the funds for?
Can you answer that, or? One up, if, if you, yeah, please. I do not have the information, but hopefully we can, if we don't have it tonight, we'll certainly.
Yeah, I don't have all the information with me either tonight, but that is as of today, from my understanding. And Doug, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I don't have the details either.
I mean Larry.
I, I know.
So the one point two is the payoff?
Yes.
That wouldn't include interest, I wouldn't assume if it.
That's principle?
Yes, that's principle.
So are there other liabilities? What I'm wondering is, if, if the past four years and what we expect to happen next year is any indication, the levy will probably bring around somewhere of three million dollars, whereas the mortgage only seems to be one point two plus some interest. So I'm kind of wondering, what's, what's the rest of the money going to be used for?
Yeah. As of today, because I know I heard this earlier, the monies has not, the monies have not gone towards operations. They've only gone to pay off the mortgage, and Larry and I have had conversations about that. The monies that will be coming in will, once we go over the amount, we have no capital reserve. We have nothing to pay if our building, the parking lot right now is in need of repair. The roofing, we have nothing. So that's what the monies would go to, would be to support the building that we're paying off, so.
Would it be possible, if, if this goes through tonight, which I anticipate it will, to come back in a couple of weeks after we have the assessed data? And maybe you could give a presentation so the public could see more, and we'd have it on film for, for folks at home?
Yeah, no, I would love to have that opportunity.
I think that would, would be, would be helpful to everyone.
Very helpful to step folks through the last four or five years and then what the next looks like. The, the one question I had, I guess for Mr. Atkins, maybe Ms. Fox, the one mil levy, the fact that we're getting the, I guess, certification on that amount, are we tied into that? If it goes, if it's less than that, if we end up proving something less? Because I, I've heard the concern from folks about, gee whiz, you know, could it be for a lower amount than what the current amount is? Maybe we could strike a balance in between?
I'm not sure I know definitively. I'm not sure I know definitively the answer to that. My guess is that it's locked in at what you asked for, what we asked the auditors to certify. But I don't know that. I would like to, let me circle back.
That'd be fine.
Sarah and I will circle back with less and get a definitive answer for you.
Okay.
That's what I would think, too.
Try to balance it in terms of either the amount or the term to try to keep it valid. Address some of the concerns that were raised. Again, I think a detailed presentation would be helpful to understand what's going on with those things.
Why is this just now being brought to our attention when you knew six months ago that this was inevitable? And we should have been brought to our attention then, so we wouldn't have to rush through this thing?
I have been at Central Connections, it'll be a year in February, and there's been a lot of things that we've been working on and doing. I'm new to this, and I pretty much was not, this was where I was directed to go and talk to each council member, which we did individually. And we started with Doug, and we thought the timeframe would be okay. We didn't realize, or I personally did not realize, that it would be brought as an emergency. So we thought, we backed it out from May, and we thought our timeframe with bringing it to council. And when we spoke to you and the individuals, that again was not brought to our attention, so that's the reason. Wasn't that, we have, I mean, we are totally transparent. We have nothing, we're not trying to backdoor, we're not trying to do anything, you know. I'm just bringing it now because this is what I was directed by our board in conversation, so that is why.
What's happening between now and election for the money? How are you making the mortgage payments?
We, actually, it's to the end of this year.
Oh, the end of, okay, 17.
2017, yeah.
So if what the mayor was talking about, if there was a sweet spot between one mil and something less, it sounds like a November ballot could still be a potential issue and you...
Right, and that was kind of our thinking is that if, you know, this would give us at least a couple of chances to maybe get it on for November. But November gives you less of a timeframe to plan for the incoming year, so that's why we wanted it in May.
I would encourage you to consider a lower mileage because, just speaking for myself, I have some concerns about a levy that a significant portion of it is going to be a contingency fund or a savings account. So I would kind of encourage you to consider that as well. That's all I have this evening.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, appreciate you coming out this evening. All right, with that, there's no other discussion. Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Takes care of our legislations for this evening. Our last item is an executive session, so just in motion, I have authority of Ohio Revised Code 121.22, do you want to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
All right, following our executive session, we'll be recessing to our next meeting in January, January 17th, these chambers. Thank you all, have a good evening and Happy New Year to everyone.
This baby, she was, she's the one who got us all sick the first time, and she was sick when we went to Florida, and we was all sick the night.